Well, good evening, everyone, and at this time I'll call to order the regular meeting of the Newmarket Town Council for Wednesday, November 19th, 2025. We'll begin, as always, with the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilor Eagleson, if you could lead us, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Thank you very much, Councilor. Okay. Next item is roll call. The Town Manager is absent this evening, and Councilor Ward is excused this evening as well. And item three, we will move right on to public forum. This is an opportunity for residents and property owners to speak on items on tonight's agenda or other matters pertaining to the Town Council business. Please state your name and address for the record, and each speaker will be limited to three minutes. Is there anyone from the community who wishes to speak this evening?
Hello, I'm Ellen Snyder, 26 Johnson Drive, and I'm on the Newmarket Conservation Commission. I wanted to speak to the Warren article about the Rosa property. We've been working with the Planning Department, the Conservation Commission, and the Rosa family to conserve 40 acres on Wadley Falls Road that extends from Newmarket to Durham. And the plan is to acquire a conservation easement on 16.5 acres, which is spelled out in the easement, and 24 acres of fee in Durham, so that's 40 acres. So one of the things that we have just recently discussed in reading this Warren article, it's not clear that the whole project is for 40 acres. So the $402,000 is for 40 acres, so 24 feet and 16.5 conservation easement. So a suggestion we have, or a question, I guess, or one of those things, is whether we should table tonight and discuss again with the town staff about inserting the 40 acres to make it more clear that the project is 40 acres and not just 16.5. We are only using town funds to acquire the easement because we can't spend money in Durham, but we're using grant money to do the acquisition in Durham. And so it's hard to get all of that in there, but we would like the idea that it's 40 acres. Otherwise, it seems like we're spending $400,000 just on 16.5. So, but we're doing really well with our fundraising, so we've secured about $120,000. We anticipate another 80 some maybe by the end of the year, and the remainder will be the Warren article and possibly one of the two small grants. So we're making great progress. The Roses are very cooperative, and so the whole project is going forward, but we're just a little concerned about the language of the Warren article. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening? Okay. Seeing none, I'll close public forum at 7:03. All right, we will move right on to consider acceptance of the minutes, and there are two sets of minutes this evening, councilors. The first is the minutes from the November 5th, 2025, non-public meeting minutes. These are, I will entertain a motion to approve the non-public meeting minutes as presented at this time. Thank you, Councilor Eagleson. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Thank you, Councilor Lamatina. If you could call the roll, please.
Councilor Glazier?
Aye.
Councilor Lamatina?
Aye.
Councilor Dornblut?
Aye.
Councilor Eagleson?
Aye.
Council Blackstone?
Aye.
Council Conley?
Aye.
Motion passes six here.
Excellent. And at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of the November 5th, 2025 meeting as presented. Thank you, Councilor Eagleson. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Thank you, Councilor Lamatina. Any discussion or changes? Okay, seeing none, if you could call the roll.
Council Glazier?
Aye.
Council Lamatina?
Aye.
Council Dornblut?
Aye.
Council Eagleson?
Aye.
Council Blackstone?
Aye.
Council Conley?
Aye.
Motion passes six here.
Excellent. All right, we will move on to the Town Manager's report for November 19th, 2025, including the department reports for October 2025. The Town Manager is absent this evening, and the Director of Planning and Community Development is filling in, so I will turn it over to you, sir.
Yeah, just quickly and briefly, if you do have any, you have the report in front of you, if you had time to read it. If you have any questions about that, I'll take those comments back to the Town Manager, and he can report to you at the next meeting.
Okay. Any questions for the Town Manager on the Town Manager's report? Okay.
You got off really easy.
Right? Any comments or discussion on any of the department reports for October 2025? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to committee reports. Do any councilors have committee reports to share this evening? Councilor Dornblut?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Two committee reports. One from last Wednesday, the Transportation Committee met after a brief hiatus of a month, which was noticeable in that we had quite a bit to discuss, including the, a report that was presented by the Town Engineer on the possibilities of addressing the unsafe road situation on 108 around Bennett Way. We had some public input regarding the walkability between that neighborhood and downtown as well, including the unsafe nature of a pedestrian crossing the railroad tracks and the fact that you are forced to switch sides without prior warning at a very awkward place on the road as a pedestrian who's unfamiliar with the surroundings, which was very good to hear, and it was very encouraging to us as a committee to have public input like that, and we would love to hear more because these, some of these issues are very neighborhood-specific, and you really only encounter them if you use the infrastructure. We discussed briefly the possibility of an age restriction for the Newmarket Exodus Connector and how that might be implemented, and we are continuing the process of addressing parking and how we might go about doing that, what a good approach might be, and we'll have a conversation about that in more depth at the next meeting. This morning, I attended the closed board meeting at which, you know, budget projections were presented. Nothing really new, but a reinforcement of the fact that because of the dwindling federal contribution or availability of federal funds, particularly through Section 5307, that this will necessitate a retooling of the transit system in the region. We won't be affected soon directly as a town because the funds that are used for our transit offerings are 5311 funds, but since our desire is to be connected to the transit system and to be part of a regional network to facilitate, you know, Newmarket's affordability, we should keep a close eye on it and participate in forthcoming regional efforts to address this together as a coalition of municipalities rather than leaving it to Coast as a standalone organization to come up with some kind of plan. And, yeah, I think that's probably, that's probably it. So it's a very interesting and very kind of thought-provoking conversation that we'll have to undertake as a region when it comes to these kinds of resources that we haven't really totally integrated into our municipal budgets, unless we are a city like Portsmouth or a city like Dover, for example. But smaller towns are, you know, treating transit more as a service rather than as necessary infrastructure. And I think if we want to continue to benefit and thrive as a region, we need to take a much closer look at how we add our understanding of the role of transit for our development as a town and as a region. So that was kind of the gist of the conversation, and I'll report on anything, anything more that comes out of that, and hopefully we will, as a town, be able to participate successfully in making that transition.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Councilor Dornblut on the Transportation Committee minutes? Council Eagleson?
Could you go into just a quick, the age restriction issue?
Yes. So because the new connector service is a door-to-door service, there is some concern that, a liability concern essentially, if your 12-year-old granddaughter, for example, Joe, were to call and then be brought to a house that, you know, she found out about somewhere and something awful were to happen to her, or your son were to be going, or my daughter, or somebody who's a minor were brought directly from driveway to driveway and something were to happen that, or they were going to a house that they were not supposed to go. It was a parent and a strange parent kind of situation, those kinds of issues. So they're trying to, we're trying to address this in a way that keeps the service open, and right now, the thought is that it would be a, we'd had this conversation at the meeting as well, and provided that input, that it, that the restriction would be 14 years of age, which would allow, that's kind of the age when you can get a job at Market Basket, for example, so it would allow somebody to take a job outside of town without having to have access to a car or be able to drive. And otherwise, the transportation would only be available with adult present, an adult present, or with a parental slip-on file. Whether that's a practicable solution is questionable. So it probably will be an age restriction of some sort, whether it's 14 or higher, hopefully not higher, we don't know yet. Coast's legal advice hasn't, wasn't available for the meeting today, so we weren't able to move on that question yet.
Any other questions for Councilor Dornblut? Okay. Other committee reports? You said you had two?
Those were the two.
Those were the two. All right, light, light committee month. All right, we will then move on to Resolutions and Ordinances in the second reading, and this evening, there are four, including the warrant article for the Rosa property purchase. So if it's all right, what I'd like to do is go ahead and move that one to the top just so that we can, we can discuss that, and that is Resolution 2025-2026-2021, or 21. That is the warrant article to purchase the Rosa property conservation easement for $402,000 with $145,000 from taxation. At this point, I would entertain a motion on this, on this resolution. Councilor Eagleson?
Quick question, just so I know. If I put a motion to table and we vote table, would it be sent right back to the committee so they can do any changes?
It would be held over to the next meeting. Yeah, so it'd be a third meeting, which would, I think, give folks time to make a recommendation for the, for the specific amendment language, is what I'm, what I'm sensing.
So if that's the will of the council, withhold the, my report on that to the third meeting, so.
Maybe we have to have a motion.
Yes, we do.
Yeah, I'll put in the motion to table then.
Okay, so I have a motion to table from Councilor Eagleson. I have a second from Council Blackstone, thank you. Discussions on, this is whether to table the motion until the next meeting.
So motion to table, open to discussion?
Correct.
It is?
Yes.
Okay.
Councilor Dornblut?
Thank you. I, it's interesting that Ellen brought this issue to the meeting because I had, in reading through the resolution and the report, the same question. It seemed to fluctuate between, you know, 16 acre and the 40 acre parcel, and I was a little confused, so I would suggest that with clarification in the resolution, that would, that would be, we would be better served.
Other discussion or comments? Council Blackstone?
Yeah, I think, you know, marketing, all Warren articles do not pass, and so I think having, having confusing language for something that could not, may not pass is a, is a bad idea. You know, this is a valuable piece of property that most people drive by every day if you drive on Main Street, and it's, you know, it is, we're just taking a small piece of it, and it should reflect that.
Yes, Councilor Glazier?
How long do we have to get this passed? At what point does this need to be approved by the council to go on the Warren article?
So it looks like there's first readings of other Warren articles at the next meeting, so there's time. Yeah.
So we can continue to the one meeting and we'll be okay?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Councilor Lamatina?
I believe we have actually till January, January they have to be finalized.
Other discussion on whether to table this till the next meeting? Okay, seeing none, if you could call the roll.
Council Glazier?
Aye.
Council Lamatina?
Aye.
Council Dornblut?
Aye.
Council Eagleson?
Aye.
Council Blackstone?
Aye.
Council Conley?
Aye.
Motion passes six here.
Okay, and this resolution is tabled until the December 3rd meeting? Okay. We will move on to the second, the next resolution in the second reading, and that is 2025-2026-29. That is the warrant article to issue $100,000 bonds for the purpose of creating a master plan for the wastewater department. And at this time, I would accept a motion to approve this resolution.
Did you skip the movement for the next?
No, oh, maybe I did.
Yeah.
Is that okay?
Just as long as you don't forget.
I'm just playing fast and loose with the order here. Do I have that resolution?
What resolution?
2025-2026-19. That's what happens when Steve takes off, just things go to hell. Okay. At this time, I would accept a motion to approve that resolution.
So moved.
Oh, thank goodness. Thank you, Councilor Dornblut. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Oh, you're the best. All right, I will turn it over to you, sir.
So, as you know, we've actually already started the master plan for the wastewater department. I submitted a request for a planning grant from the SRF program. It was selected by the SRF program, so how this works is we'll continue to do the master plan and complete it. If this passes, we will do the applications, and then we'll submit the invoices and get $100,000 back. So it's really just a, it's called a loan grant, but it's 100% loan forgiveness. So it basically gives us $100,000 on a project that we're already doing.
Questions or discussion on this resolution? Councilor Dornblut?
So just to clarify, we are, we are raising $100,000 to show good faith, or is this in addition to $100,000 that are, oh, no, we're just issuing a bond, but why are we, why are we, why do we have to raise the bond if there is a loan, if there's a loan involved? I don't understand.
Because that's how the, the SRF does the program, you actually have to do a bond for it.
So it's kind of like, this is, here's, here's our commitment, we want to do this so badly, we're going to issue a bond for $100,000, get the, get the money, but then you get, you are...
Then they forgive the, they forgive the loan, so we incense it's, get $100,000.
So it's a, it's a zero-sum game?
Yeah.
That's a very, very strange arrangement, but, okay.
It's because of our form of government.
Yeah, apparently.
No, it is. I don't disagree, but it's the rules.
Okay, okay. Very good.
Other questions or discussion? All right, seeing none, if you could call the roll.
Council Glazier?
Aye.
Council Lamatina?
Aye.
Council Dornblut?
Aye.
Council Eagleson?
Aye.
Council Blackstone?
Aye.
Council Conley?
Aye.
Motion passes six here.
Okay. Councilors, we're gonna try and get back on track here. I, at this time, I'm gonna move on to Resolution 2025-2026-18, the one that I should have gone to first, and this is the warrant article to issue $1,440,000 in bonds for Cushing Road and Leverland Drive stormwater improvement projects. And at this time, I would accept a motion to approve this resolution.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilor Dornblut. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Thank you, Councilor Lamatina. It's time, I'll ask you to come forward.
Good evening, Lindsay Butler, the Town Engineer. So this warrant article for stormwater improvements at Cushing Road and Leverland Drive is sort of a continuation of a project that the town started in 2023. We received a clean water SRF loan with principal forgiveness, much like Sean was just talking about, but for stormwater planning, and we completed the stormwater planning portion of the work that was evaluation and preliminary design of the stormwater improvements, and this next phase is for final design permitting and construction of the proposed improvements to capture and treat stormwater runoff and reduce coastal erosion in a very large residential community that's right along Great Bay, and this is to address the stormwater runoff from the public roadways within that neighborhood. So the total project cost is $1,440,000, and we are seeking another SRF loan, which is why we have to present the warrant article. We are hoping to get the authority to borrow that loan from New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services, and they have offered 15% principal forgiveness on that loan, so there is an opportunity for that total project cost to be reduced to the town.
Okay. Questions or discussions, or discussion? Council Lamatina?
Cushing Road is pretty, is it Cushing Road or just?
Nope. It's just the portion that's kind of the, the loop segment at the end that combines with Leverland Drive.
Have we done, have we done work going up Cushing Road?
There has been some, I, my understanding is, there's been some work recently, but that's not where the majority of the erosion that's going on right now is occurring, and it's also a little bit further. There's more land to cross from that portion of the roadway before it reaches the bay, gets a little closer to the bay and the salt marsh as you get towards the end.
Council Dornblut and then Council Blackstone?
Thank you. Could you briefly describe? Could you briefly describe the proposed work and what the objectives are? What, what's being, what's being remedied?
So the existing roadway through that portion is very flat and is sort of generally sloped like a normal road. It's called a normal crown where runoff slopes to both sides of the roadway. And what we're proposing with this is because there's a segment of the roadway that has a nice, large roadside swale area, we can use that roadside swale area to capture the runoff instead of having it just do whatever is happening over the surface of the ground there. So we're gonna super elevate the road, so it involves reconstruction of the roadway so that it, instead of going like this, it goes like this and sends all the runoff to the roadside swale area where we'll install the stormwater BMPs or stormwater control measures that is designed to detain, capture the runoff and keep it there to filter out the nutrients. And then it goes into the pipes and gets sent out. So it's a little bit of a capture and treat and then discharge setup. Certainly.
Describe that, that capturing process and the treatment. Is that a, like a rain garden kind of concept, or is that a, are those filters that need to be replaced and monitored?
It's sort of a combination. It has a small, we actually just installed one at the storage shed that's located now behind the fire station. It's called a high-rate biofiltration system. So there's a small chamber piece that has filter media in it, and then there's a large kind of grass swale or depression in the, the side slope where the water can be retained and then filtered out through that little filter media to remove the nutrients. So we would be putting similar, the design, the proposed design in preliminary design is that we would be putting four of those systems within the roadside swale areas through that segment of the roadway.
And, and the maintenance that is required is, are we able to do that internally?
Yep, DPW would do those. The maintenance for these is fairly minimal as far as filter medias go because it's a fairly common mulch that is used for the media. So it's getting out and making sure there's no weeds and other plants getting in the way of the media, and it's kind of delineated with some stones. So it's easy for, for DPW highway crews to see and identify, buildings and grounds actually, and buildings and ground staff accompanied us on the startup and review of maintenance for the one that's at the fire station. They'll be working on that. They already have a little bit through the fall, so we're getting some experience in maintaining those, and we'll have more as we put more in.
So this is, this is to retain water and slow the, you know, the dispersion of the, of the water over time and avoid, in a, a large rain event, to have water and have, have erosion because there's too much water trying to go wherever it wants to go?
Redirect and filter so that it's not uncontrolled runoff.
Yeah. So it's not about the filtering so much as it is about the retention? Is that correct?
Kind of both.
Both, okay.
Both are pretty important, and these high-rate biofiltration units
Yeah.
are designed to filter nutrients like nitrogen and phosphorus and total suspended solids at the levels that we require in our site plan review
Yeah.
for stormwater designs.
Okay.
So we'd be installing some control measures that we would be meeting our design standards.
Excellent. Thank you.
Counselor Blackstone.
So as Bart probably told you, we discussed this last night in the planning board, and the, the concern or the fear or whatever, that the comment was that we had previously put a warrant article to do this. It was for less money with a twenty-five percent return, and it was voted down. And so the question is, what's different now that we're asking for more money with less, you know, fifteen percent? Why, you know, why do we think it's gonna pass now and it didn't pass then?
Uh, that's an interesting question, and I don't know that I have the, the best answer for that. But, so one thing I can say is this is the same project as that warrant article. The total project cost is the same as last year. We're not, so we're not actually asking for more money. The total ask is the same as it was last year. The unfortunate piece of it is that the principal forgiveness offer from DES is less this year than it was last year. But the way those warrant articles are required to be written for that authority to borrow is that it has to be for the total project cost. So the total project cost is the same, and we have had lots of conversations with the Moody Point Community Association to discuss ways to help offset that cost. There's the principal forgiveness that we're hoping to obtain through the SRF program, and we've had some discussions with them about some of the long-term maintenance and the community association being able to assist the town in bearing the burden of maintenance costs over the, the next several years once they go in. And we will also do our best to seek any other grant or funding opportunities we can to offset that cost and reduce it. But in order to get the SRF loan to begin with, we have to get the authority to borrow that full one point four million amount.
So there was a discussion, and I don't know what this is, but there, apparently there are houses being flooded by this. And there was some discussion that maybe the town could say we have a liability that we have to protect by doing this. I didn't know if that, that's not something that was ever discussed, okay?
No.
Thank you.
Counselor Glazberg.
Some of the conversations that I've heard when this was last on the warrant was that the, the neighborhood that it's in has, you know, some of the more valuable family homes in town, and the, almost the belief that they should be responsible for maintaining it when it is the, a town responsibility and it is our, you know, the bay is everyone's responsibility. I don't know if there's any way to educate the public more about the responsibility, like who, this project in general before it goes on warrant. I support it. I'm gonna vote yes tonight. I think that it's very important, but that's just my, my thoughts on it.
Yeah, we, we, myself and Rick Malaski from DPW are working with representatives from DES, Department of Environmental Services. They have some technical assistance opportunities from the New England Finance Center, and they're working with us to help put together some educational messaging or, or postcards or information that we can distribute and will probably be posting on our website and be sharing throughout the community, through the newsletter, to help spread the word and share a little bit more of that information. So hopefully that will help this time around.
Thank you.
As part of our total nitrogen permit for the wastewater treatment facility, our nitrogen plan says that we will make every effort to put in these kind of structures to reduce the total nitrogen going to the bay. So by doing this and going forward and attempting to get this done, we are doing our best to fulfill that permit requirement.
Yeah, I would just suggest you add that to the warrant article somehow.
Uh, we, yeah, the, the warrant article language is, has to be very, fairly specific. I think we do know in there that it is, I'm just gonna flip to it and see before I misspeak. It does help us meet regulatory requirements and water quality guidelines. So we do have a note in there to that effect, but we can't necessarily expand. It's already a long article to begin with.
Other questions for the town engineer? Any other discussion on the warrant article? Counselor Dornblatt.
Yes, I do have discussion, but I just wanna ask one more question. What is the, what is the annual maintenance on, on, just roughly the cost or periodic maintenance? Do you have a, a ballpark figure that you're willing to?
Ballpark? We do have tables, so I'm trying to remember what that looked like. I wanna say it was in the range of maybe five thousand in a year with some of that set aside so that we need to, we know we would need to replace the mulch filter components only every like five to ten years. So it's not necessarily an every-year cost.
Okay. Thank you.
Other comments or discussion? Counselor Dornblatt.
Well, as far as discussion, I, this is, I, I'm in favor of this, placing this on the warrant, because I totally agree with your comments, Counselor Glazberg, that this is a responsibility that we all share. And clearly, we've made commitments to third parties as a town that compel us to do something like this and to take care of the bay. I wonder if we could amend the language with a paragraph to reflect some of the explanation that you suggested for, for background. Whereas, whatever that is, and I don't have that language, but it, that may be, ideally that language would, whatever communication would be putting out there. But something to that effect, yeah.
Yeah, I, I'm not a, I'm not a warrant article language writer.
Right, right, right.
But, yeah, I agree. I think you gotta sell it, 'cause clearly you had a problem selling it last time.
Sorry?
Absolutely.
So I think instead of potentially amending the language, you know, maybe this is supplemental material explaining the warrant articles, like be posted to the website so people become more educated on it, instead of just looking at and reading it and not understanding it potentially. So maybe it's more of that route than changing the language.
Rather than making it more complicated.
Correct.
Counselor Glazberg, who you may be recognized for. Help Wendy.
I believe I recall handouts at the ballots discussing stuff like this.
Yeah.
Am I, am I wrong, right?
Yes.
Like something that we can do where we can hand it out or have it available to people that are interested in knowing more. So I, I would support that as well.
Yeah, maybe you could draft something like that. I, I've definitely seen that.
Other comments or discussion? Okay, seeing none, if you could call the roll.
Aye.
Counselor Lamatina?
Aye.
Counselor Dornblatt?
Aye.
Counselor Eagleson? Aye.
Counselor Blackstone? Aye.
Counselor Carney? Aye.
And on your little brochure, you can say the town council voted unanimously to approve it.
Thank you very much.
Okay. The last resolution in the second reading this evening is Resolution twenty-two-five, twenty-two-six dash twenty-two, and this is a decision to rescind the solid waste fund. The town manager has given me a, a statement that reminds folks that the town manager and director of finance and administration are not here this evening to discuss. While we had discussion, discussion at the last meeting on this island, item, if the council would prefer to hold this over to, for a third reading, table it, and there's no objection, we can, we can do that. So at this time, I would, I would entertain a motion on this, on this resolution. A motion to accept, a motion to table?
I'll make a motion, sorry. I'll make a motion to table this item till the next meeting.
I'll second.
Thank you, Counselor Lamatina. Thank you, Counselor Glazberg. Any discussion on whether to table the resolution? Okay, seeing none, if you could call the roll, please.
Aye.
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 Okay. That is it for resolutions in the second reading. We are now on to resolutions in the first, and this evening, counselors, there are four. The first is, and there are several resolutions in the first reading. These will be read by title and scheduled for second reading at our next meeting. Resolution twenty-two-five, twenty-two-six dash twenty. This is a warrant article for the issuance of a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in bonds for the purpose of water infrastructure improvements to replace water system services in compliance with the federal lead and copper rule. Resolution twenty-two-five, twenty-two-six dash twenty-three, a warrant article to issue a hundred thousand dollar bonds for Shanda Park Stormwater Planning Project. Resolution twenty-two-five, twenty-two-six dash twenty-four, to pay for fiber optic cable emergency repair with town technology capital reserve funds. And Resolution twenty-two-five, twenty-two-six dash twenty-five, authorizing the town manager to enter into an agreement with Municipal Resources Incorporated MRI for a fire and EMS organizational operational assessment. And those are our resolutions and ordinances in the first reading. At this time, I will turn it, I will go, move on to new business and correspondence. And first is correspondence to the town council. Is there any correspondence to the town council to be read into the record this evening?
There is none, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. And then we will move on to closing comments by town counselors. Do any counselors have closing comments this evening? Counselor Blackstone.
So I would just like to congratulate Ellen Snyder, who was just here. She was given an award by Volunteer New Hampshire. The award was back in October. She has written and shuffled through thousands of dollars worth of grants for the environmental committee, and she's been an active member in recruiting people into the environmental committee. And then we recently had a reception for her here, was it last week? I think so, yeah. And there were town counselors, there were members of the, of the town government and friends and family, you know, neighbors. It was a very nice reception.
Thank you, Counselor Blackstone. Other comments from town counselors this evening? Counselor Lamatina.
The, the Limpre River, I'm sorry, Limpre Healthcare recently had the, an opening for their community refrigerator, and I saw something posting tonight that they're empty already and that they're looking for more donations. It's a very worthwhile cause.
Okay. And if people wanna donate, how do they do that, Counselor Lamatina? And where do they go?
They can just bring the items down to Limpre Healthcare.
Okay. And is it, do they go inside the building? Where do they go?
They can bring them inside the building, put them inside the refrigerator. On the side of the building, there's a refrigerator, and there's a couple of cabinets or closet areas they can put items there.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Counselor Glazberg.
They must be labeled and dated. Oh, okay. In the fridge. Please label and date.
Okay. Good. Counselor Dornblatt.
Just to say, I just dropped something off and the fridge is fairly well-filled.
Excellent.
Bringing the latest updates here.
I know, it's kind of real time, it's kind of exciting. Okay, and any other, any other comments? All right. Next weekend is, is Thanksgiving, so wishing counselors and everybody in Newmarket a safe and joyous, you know, kickoff to the, to the holiday season. Our next meeting is December third, twenty-twenty-five, and if there are no objections, I will consider us adjourned. us adjourned.
So this, this, so like, it's in, it's, uh, it's, uh, Moody.
Scott? Scott?
We shut the mic. It's a very, very busy.